I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, April 25th, 2016 to order. And please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to weekly briefing. Any weekly briefing items? Public comments and announcements? Amy?
I've got three.
Well, we'll start with the first one.
I'll go in order of occurrence.
Okay.
I'm Amy, the conservation administrator. First, the conservation department has its annual Arbor Day seedling giveaway. That's going to be this Friday from nine to noon here in the town hall parking lot. If the weather's bad, we'll just be in the foyer downstairs. And every year, the conservation department gives away trees, shrubs, and wildflowers just to anybody who wants them as part of the Arbor Day celebrations and trying to encourage native plants that would grow here. So this year, we're offering flowering white dogwood, elderberry, sweet shrub, and a northeast wildflower pollinator seed mix.
And it's one per customer, right?
We ask at first that it's one of each per customer, but at the end of the day, closer to noon, if people want to stop by and see if we have any leftover, they're more than welcome to take them.
Okay.
I did get fewer this year. I usually get about 100 apiece, but this year, because we had leftovers. In the past, I've gotten fewer, like 50 to 75 per kind, but I've gotten bigger ones. So they're about waist height, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They look really good.
Not all in your car, are they?
They are at my house.
Okay.
Because last time I had them delivered to town hall, they caused allergic reactions in the departments.
Wow.
So I had them delivered to my house.
Who would think, right?
They can all fit in the car.
Okay. No, it's a good project.
Yeah. I enjoy doing it. It's fun. The next day, on this Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 to noon, is the Second Annual Harwich Tour to Trash in collaboration with the Harwich Conservation Trust. And you can sign up on the Harwich Conservation Trust website. It's cleaning up road sides in our town as well as beaches and other common areas. And last year, we had over 100 volunteers. We cleaned up over 35 miles of roads, picked up over a ton of recycling. And so that says a lot because recycling's very light and a lot of trash as well. We don't know the exact number on that. But again, if people want to sign up, Harwich Conservation Trust website, it tells you what you need to bring, and we will provide lunch afterwards.
And they meet where and at what time?
Sorry, it's going to be in the rear of the Monomoy Regional High School.
At what time?
They can start coming at 9:30.
Okay. And if someone fails to sign up on the website, can they still show up?
They can still show up. We have routes designated for walk-ins.
Okay. And once they get there, are they assigned an area or a street or something?
Online, if they sign up online, they're already assigned an area. You actually get to pick where you can go if you go online. We have 25 routes available for you. This was our American member, Dave Ushako. He came up with this idea of volunteer spot. And it lets you put the routes in. It lets you sign up for which ones you want. It tells you who's going where. It's awesome.
Does each participant get like a vest or something so that people know who they are?
Yes. The health department is letting us borrow vests. We've also purchased another 50. We're giving flags for any type of hazardous material. Police and fire are in coordination with us for, you know, being at dangerous intersections when people are there and also for hazardous material cleanup if they were to find something on the road that they really shouldn't be picking up. We also have gloves and pickers available and trash bags.
Actually, we found a dishwasher on the side of the road two weeks ago.
That would be for the highway department.
No, I know. But I mean, no, they can't pick that up. But I mean, can you imagine somebody just dropping, this is on Depot Road, they just dropped a dishwasher in the middle of nowhere?
Oh, I can imagine. I've seen TVs and pianos and the Bell's Neck and things like that.
It's amazing.
So it is pretty amazing. So that's the second one.
That's number two, right? Oh, you got one more.
Number two.
You got one more.
The third one, that same day, Saturday, between 2:00 in the afternoon and whenever it finishes at night, is the Rockin' for the Reef event over at the Land Ho in Harwich. And it is $20 to attend. It all goes to a reef fund that you folks established. We've already generated some good money for that. And all that money is going to go towards environmental education in the school systems and the importance of marine ecosystems, as well as hopefully for a nest egg for the next reef deployment. And I have to say, on Wednesday of this week, the Division of Marine Fisheries is going to dive out to the site again in video.
Nice.
So hopefully, at the event, we'll be able to show you, just in a month, hopefully, what we're seeing out there at the reef. And people can get tickets either at the conservation department or, well, actually, there's a phone number and email for somebody else here, but contact me and I'll put you in touch with who you need to get ahold, who you need to talk to. There's four bands playing, and the entrance fee pays for food and entertainment.
You know, make us feel good about summer coming, right?
Yeah.
All these things.
And the prizes are amazing, let me tell you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for public comment announcements? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Janelle? We're going to take item six, which is executive session minutes of April 11, 2016 separately.
Okay.
So we'll do that after you get through the bulk of it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, A, approve minutes for, one, February 27th, 2016, regular meeting; two, March 28th, 2016, regular meeting; three, March 28th, 2016, executive session; four, April 4th, 2016, executive session; five, April 7th, 2016, regular meeting, joint workshop; B, accept the resignation of Wendy Woods Hartwell from the Real Estate and Open Space Committee and the Historic District Historical Commission effective immediately; C, approve the request for a one-day special liquor license for wine and malt for the family pantry of Cape Cod for a fundraising event on May 31st, 2016, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM; and D, approve the renewal of junk dealer's license for Winsong Antiques.
Second.
Okay, moving to second, approve the consent agenda with the exception of A6, which is take up separately. Discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Okay, we get a motion on number six, A6.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept, approve the minutes for April 11th, 2016, executive session.
Second.
Okay, moving to second to approve A6 on the consent agenda, which is the executive session minutes of April 11, 2016, at which Linda was not present. So discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Yep. One abstention. Okay. All right, we'll move on. Public hearing and presentations, we have none. Old business. As everybody knows, town meeting is next Monday, 7:00 in the high school, excuse me, in the community center gym. Be great to see lots of people there. It's the, a couple of nights we really conduct the business of the town, and this is a town meeting form of government, so people get to get up and say within the rules and regulations of the town meeting and the moderator on every article, get to at least voice their interest or concerns. So it's actually an interesting time. It's a very good form of government, so we look forward to seeing everybody there. And I think, as everybody knows, a lot of the business of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Committee, over the last several months, has been getting ourselves ready for what goes on at town meeting. So, okay. So first, we have annual town meeting, Article 26, reserve for future appropriation amounts from FY 2017 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues. Do we have an update, Chris, on anything there?
I think we initially, we did not have the numbers, and now we have the numbers plugged in there. The grand total is 496,000, 086, and that's divvied up into the three categories, the historic, open space, and housing.
Okay, let me just get my stuff.
Each one of those boxes, 165,000, just for those at home.
Okay, so I want to make a motion on Article 26.
Move to accept and adopt Article 26, annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay, moving second to adopt Article 26, CBC reserve. Discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Next is Article 38, which is purchase of land for open space purposes, and this is the marini property. I think you folks had this on your agenda last week when I was absent. Do we have a status, Chris, on this one?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Michael Lack. We're in partnership with the folks at the Harwich Conservation Trust, and I just think maybe Michael's the more appropriate person to provide an update as to where we stand.
Okay. Michael, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Michael Lack, Executive Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. As you know, we partner with the town often to leverage as much private and also public funding, especially from the state, if we can be competitive with our grant applications for open space acquisitions. As a background to Article number 38, this is a project sponsored by the Town's Real Estate and Open Space Committee and unanimously supported by the Community Preservation Committee of the town. When first proposed to the Community Preservation Committee by the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, it was thought best to keep the overall proposed amount to, on the lower end, given the number and diversity of applications to the Community Preservation Fund, historic preservation, recreation-based, and others. So that's why the maximum contribution under this article asked of the town through town meeting voters on May 2nd through Article 38 is 500,000 toward a acquisition of roughly 17 acres, most of which the developable portion, and the vast majority of the acreage residing in Harwich and East Harwich, a few acres, the undevelopable portion in Chatham. So as you see the article structured, it asks for maximum contribution of 500,000 from Town Community Preservation Act funds, supplemented by another 300,000 to be raised by Harwich Conservation Trust for a total warrant Article number 38 figure of 800,000. Why 800,000, you might ask? That hopefully puts the town in a positive position to apply for a state land grant. Land grant reimbursement rate is calculated at 50% of the article's value or the value of the legal interest acquired by the town, whichever is less. In this case, we hope to maximize the town's potential reimbursement grant amount at 400,000, which is half of 800,000. In this particular case, the article is structured such that because Harwich Conservation Trust has committed to raising the balance between a purchase price still to be negotiated and the town's maximum contribution of 500,000, the majority of funds being raised by Harwich Conservation Trust, the Harwich Conservation Trust would own the property, subject to a conservation restriction, to be held by the town. That's the reverse of what we typically do. Typically, Harwich Conservation Trust would hold the conservation restriction on a town property acquired with Community Preservation Act funds. A conservation restriction on Community Preservation Act-funded open space purchases is a requirement by state statute. So in this case, we would have the town hold the conservation restriction. All of this information is outlined in a handout that will be distributed to town meeting voters on May 2nd. I have had the handout approved by town moderator today. I have copies with me tonight if you'd like to see that, or I could email it at a later time. That's really the sum, summary of this article to date. We hope that the Board of Selectmen would make a positive recommendation in advance of town meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I would suggest you email that to us.
Will do.
If you would, please. Okay, we have a motion on Article 38?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Or you want to?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Angela.
It says on the top, if I'm reading, is this 188,000 on the top referring to Article 37, or is it referring to Article 38?
That's 37.
That's, it can choose, the other part of it is nowhere in this article do I see the town's portion being 500,000. What I see is that the total being 800 and 300 coming out, which obviously leads $500,000. But I think when we get around to doing a motion, it would be helpful for the people to understand exactly what they're expected to come up with.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, on all the motions, this is the only one that's still outstanding, so I need to coordinate with the town attorney to make sure we get it right. As Michael alluded to, the negotiations are still ongoing, so we're trying to figure that out. But that one may be ready for the Monday night meeting, so maybe giving them as much time as possible.
Is there a motion on Article 38?
Move that we accept and adopt Article 38, purchase land for open space purposes, the amount of 500,000 paid out of CPA funds.
Second.
Okay, moving second to accept and adopt Article 38, the amount of 500, up to 500,000 dollars from CPA funds for the purchase of marini property. Discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Abstention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I assume that you'll be ready to stand up and explain everything on town meeting, so it's crystal clear.
If asked, I will be, I will be there. Yes.
I think he just asked you.
Yes, yes, I will be there. Thank you.
Let me ask you. Okay, moving on. Article 55 is the next one. Let me just get to it here.
Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up, it's related, while Michael's still here, I just, I was going to report under the administrator announcements that the Sudfin property is probably going to close in the next week or so. So I just wanted to, I just got that news today that things are progressing and that will be, that's another one where we have a partnership with the folks from HCT.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Article 55, which is amend the Harwich Home Rule Charter, establish a charter enforcement commission. Last time this board took this up, which was a couple of weeks ago, we had four members present. If I recall, the vote was two to two, which means there was no real vote. So now we have the full board. If someone would like to make a motion on this one.
I move that we accept and adopt Article 55, amend the Harwich Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Okay, moving second to Article 55.
Enforcement Commission, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Article 55, accept and adopt, it's the charter amendment, excuse me, amend the Harwich Home Rule Charter to establish a charter enforcement commission. Discussion on the motion. We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So two to three. So you want to make a, an alternate motion? The motion has not passed, by the way, so...
Move to indefinitely postpone Article 55.
Second.
Okay, moving second to Article 55, indefinite postponement. Discussion on that motion. And then we'll put that to a vote. All those in favor, this is for indefinite postponement. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three to two, it passes, so it's indefinitely postponed. Article 60, the stabilization fund. Do we have a number, Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have been able to go through, and we, the number that we will be presenting as part of the motions, which I think was in the motions package that I sent out, was 1,428,500, which is about $100,000 more than we had hoped. I was kind of waiting for snow and ice to kind of, kind of filter through to make sure we get the final number, but that would be the final number that we would present to town meeting, 1,428,500.
Okay, and do you know, Chris, how you handle the balance, if that was...
I think it's 1.1 million.
Today.
Today.
So it's double.
Just more than double.
Yep, that's great. Okay. Article 60, stabilization fund, is there a motion?
Move to accept and adopt Article 60, stabilization fund, 1,428,500 out of free cash.
Second.
Okay, moving second to Article 60, destabilization fund, 1,428,500 to be taken from free cash. Discussion? And then we'll put that to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. All right, we'll get to the special now. Article one is the Fund of Snow and Ice Deficit.
On this one, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the number is, right now, we're at about 238,000. Link believes that there's additional bills coming in. One example of that is the schools. We have, I think it's Bobby Hour won the contract to do the snow plowing, so that's our obligation for the town. So once he gets all the bills in, he believes he'll be close to that 250,000.
So you're recommending that we approve, accept and adopt this at 250,000?
The 250,000.
The motion?
Move to accept and adopt Special Town Meeting Article one, 250,000 out of free cash.
Second.
Okay, the Special Town Meeting Article one, which is snow and ice deficit, has been moved to accept and adopt, and the amount is 250,000 dollars out of free cash. Discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, no? Okay. Article four in the special, Chris, you have an update on that one?
This one is, this one hasn't changed. 165,000, we had a lot of extra tonnage coming into the recycling facility, so the CND is what it's called, construction and demolition debris, we're over. Unfortunately, as that tonnage comes in, we get that money, comes in as a revenue, but it also has an expense as we go and dispose of it. So it's 165,000 is the estimate that we will be over for this current fiscal year. We do anticipate, after review of the budget, that there'll be sufficient funds in the health insurance budget to offset that. So we will be asking for this budget transfer from existing FY 16 revenues, I'm sorry, 16 budgets to offset that. The reason why we're doing this town meeting is that they passed in 2010 the Municipal Relief Act that allowed for 3% to occur. This is a little bit more than the 3%, so that's why we have this for town meeting. 165,000 from health insurance to DPW.
And it says that in the article? It says that in the article?
Yes. I think on the explanation, we have it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So we have a motion on Article four in the special town meeting?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept and adopt Special Town Meeting Article four, fund budget shortfall, 165,000 as a transfer from the health insurance budget to the DPW's budget.
Second.
Okay, moving second to Article four in the special town meeting, which is budget shortfall, to transfer 165,000 dollars in health insurance fund to cover the DPW shortfall in CND. Discussion? And then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to correct myself. I did not make it into the book, but I know that FinCom voted that number, the 165, but it's not in the book, but 165 for folks there. An insert in it.
So now we have votes on all the articles, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now the one-liners, the article assignments. I don't know if you folks have done any horse trading or anything has gone on since my absence, but I assume this list is up to date, unless somebody tells me otherwise. And quite frankly, just to be clear, on town meeting, sometimes the less you say, the better off things are. And if something is, a positive motion is made on something, and there's no need to get up and make any grandiose explanation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, you don't have to get up and say anything. You know, the Finance Committee will make most of the positive motions, and a lot of times, department heads or committees or whatever will get up and they'll be the advocates for the article. If they get stuck or need clarification, or, you know, some, somebody asks, you know, what did the Board of Selectmen do with this thing, then it's appropriate and necessary to get up. The other thing I would say is, in most cases, one, and sometimes two individuals are identified on the list, any of us can feel free, you know, if we need the help, to get up and say, you know, what's needed to be said in support of articles, so not cast some concrete. You can still do some horse trading. It's just important that if we get to a, you know, we get to a point that someone needs to say something from the board, that there is someone designated to do that and prepared to do that. So for the articles you've been assigned, you may just pay a little bit more attention to them than all the business we've been conducting up here for the last several months. Okay? And if anybody's still horse trading, you know, you're allowed to do it up until the night of town, or until town meeting starts, I guess. Okay? Anything else on that one? All right, let's go on to new business. Let me flip down here. I have a memo from the Harbor Master. John Rendon is here regarding Sacotucket Municipal Marina Reconstruction Project Funds. Chris or John, do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, just to, yeah, just to provide a little bit of framework, at the last board meeting in which this topic was discussed, there was a couple of things. One, we had presented two schedules. One was the declining debt schedule, the other was the level fund debt, and there was no decision made in terms of if there was a board preference. I don't necessarily think that there needs to be necessarily a board preference even tonight, but if you wanted to vote it, certainly you could, you could vote that. The other one, and I think much more specific to the Waterways Committee, is they wanted to make sure that the identification of the funds that would be going towards funding this, and we have said, I think, under either plan, that more than 75% will be funded out of the receipts. And there was a specific memo that John put together, just kind of identifying those existing receipts from the, and I'll just run through these, the mooring fees, the existing would go up by 80,000, that's out of Receipts Reserve Fund, a mooring rate increase of 10% would go towards that as well, a Waterways user fee, which is another Receipts Reserve Fund, the existing amount of that, 75,000, would be put towards this debt service, and then the dockage rate increase, which is currently a general fund. The intent of this memo is to transfer that to the 1626 account, and then the 11 additional slips would also be dedicated or transferred from general fund into 1626. And I think that the, and John can correct me, but I think the Waterways Committee was very concerned that, they wanted to make sure that the people in the community knew for certain that what the fundings, the funding sources were, were going to be dedicated for paying off that debt service. And so they, I asked John to put this memo together that basically asks the board to make a commitment to have those, these funding sources that were identified, to have these be the primary funding sources for funding the debt service related to the harbor project at Sacotucket Harbor. And just so folks know, I know that the newspaper really didn't, not the local paper, but the big paper, got it wrong, where they kind of alluded that...
That was the big paper.
This is the big paper.
Phil, aren't you the big paper?
It's the important paper.
Bigger. The jumbo paper.
But in there, there is a reason why the motion will read $7 million. We have to have the motion read $7 million because in municipal finance, you have to say the total amount of what you're going to spend. So in that, we are going to spend $7 million. $1 million due to the hard work and efforts of the Harbor Master will become in the form of a grant. So now that nets down to $6 million. $6 million borrowed over 20 years with the idea that the harbor receipts, as identified, would cover 75% of that. So ultimately, the taxpayer is paying a small fraction of the total cost of this project. And I think it's important to make sure that that gets out there. And one key component, and I think the language that I put into the motion when it was drafted, is that it will be primarily funded by the receipts generated by the harbor. And I think that that's a commitment that the Waterways folks are looking for, and that's what I would request this evening, that the board make that determination, that those fees, as identified, would be committed to paying that financing.
Assuming the article passes town meeting and passes the ballot.
Assuming, in both cases, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Linda?
Chris, on Wednesday morning, we had talked about this schedule itself, and there were a couple of questions that I had, and I was wondering if you had resolved them yet in terms of transferring money from general funds to Receipts Reserve. terms of transferring money from general funds to Receipts Reserve. And that, from way back, I had understood that you couldn't be splitting a fee and its increase into two different places, according to all the Receipts Reserve and revolving funds and all those issues. And whether or not the eleven additional slips constituted a new revenue under the definition of new revenue, or is it just general, so has that been, I'm reluctant to vote on this until I hear the answer to that, because those are kind of like Department of Revenue, Mass. General Law questions.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to answer two ways. One, I'm going to defer to Andy for the, kind of the accounting question. He, that's what we, we wanted to grab him to make sure, because he, he took a look at it. And the second is, the board can always dedicate, so one of the things we had talked about on Wednesday, that if, if for some reason legality-wise, we can't specifically do that, the board can always dedicate that these funds would be identified to go towards that. So I would ask, one way or another, if the board gives some intent, so that material, when the voters get it, they have something to kind of hang their hat on, that seventy-five percent is coming from the Waterways fees. But I'll defer to Andy on-
Because all I'm looking for is that we can legally do this, and we don't march off on this path and find that, whoops, it's a problem.
Andy Go, Finance Director, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Well, I found several laws. One of them were already used in the Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund. A city of town may establish Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund to receive revenue under subsection I of section two of chapter sixty B and under section ten A of chapter ninety-one. And sums received from the Commonwealth or the federal government may appropriate monies in said fund for maintenance, dredging, cleaning and improvement of harbors, inland waters, and great ponds of the Commonwealth, the public access thereto, three, the breakwaters, retaining walls, piers, wharfs, moorings thereof, and law enforcement, fire, fire preventions. So I think it might come under that. Also, just a departmental revolving fund, and I also found another one under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, Agency Boards' annual operating costs offset by estimated receipts of user fees. Notwithstanding the provisions of section fifty-three, a city of town which accepts provisions of this section may specify when making appropriation for the annual ordinary operating costs of any agency, board, department, or office of said city of town, that such costs may be offset in part or in aggregate by the estimated receipts from fees charged to users of services provided by the agency boards or departments. So I think that covers it.
Okay. Thank you for the research.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Alright. I want to make a motion about this. Request is that we, we adopt the use of these sources of funds and dedicate them to the new harbor project. Mr. Gunderson, just on that.
Can I ask a couple of questions about it, as, since this is supposed to go before the taxpayers? I thought maybe I could give a couple of preview questions that I might ask, if that's okay?
Go for it. Try and get a motion at some point.
Do you want a second on that motion?
I don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion.
I don't have a motion yet, so I'll just take this as, then hopefully get to a motion of some sort. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Richard Gunderson. And I apologize if some of these questions are asked before, but when I look at this chart that Mr. Rendone provided, it talks about existing type fees. And my question is, out of that eighty and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-five thousand of existing money, does that make a shortfall in the general fund of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? I mean, isn't this money being used already somewhere, and it's now going to be used for the debt service? That's question one.
Okay. John, do you want to answer that question? We'll do this one at a time, if that helps.
John Rendone, Harbor Master. To answer the question, the two existing funds indicated in the table, mooring fees, mooring fees that are collected currently go into a Receipts Reserve Fund automatically. They are not part of the general fund, so they are not obligated. And the same is true with Waterway user fees. That goes into a separate Receipts Reserve Fund, not the general fund. And so that is not spoken for either.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Looking back on it, it wasn't a good question. Okay.
Well, that's alright. All questions are good.
Okay. The the memo that was referred to here, is it about four lines down, it says, "As outlined in the reference A," I think that refers to a memo that Mr. Clark wrote on March twenty-fourth. And I just wanted to clarify an inconsistency. In John's memo today, or actually April ninth, it says, "Approximately seventy-five percent of the twenty-year repayment debt will come from harbor receipts." Yet, in the previous memo that he refers to, it says, let's see, "The debt exclusion, the understanding that approximately seventy-five percent parentheses achieved by year eight of the debt schedule of set repayment debt will be included with harbor receipts." I'm confused whether it's at year eight that it's covering seventy-five percent, or is it year one that it's covering seventy-five percent? And the other half of that question is, it really does depend on what kind of debt schedule profile you're using. And my assumption is that both John's and Chris's memo are using a declining chart. So it's confusing to me, and if that's supposed to be presented to the general public at the town meeting, I think it might be confusing to them.
I understand.
Okay.
And I, and I would think, no matter what debt schedule is, is decided upon, that with these revenues over the life of the project, and I think that's the way I look at the life of the project, that these funds, if you will, would cover above seventy-five percent of the cost. Would be my assumption.
Yeah, over the life of the project, but in your declining debt schedule, it's heavy front-ended.
I understand.
And it's more like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to have to come up in those early years.
Yep.
Where the flat would be zero.
Understand. And that's, that's a decision-
Bumped out, it'd be a balloon payment at the end.
Once we get through the ballot, and we get to bonding, that'll be a discussion that we'll have at that point in time, I assume, which way to do it.
But from a taxpayer's viewpoint,
Yep.
if I know it's zero impact for the foreseeable future.
I understand.
And inflation and price increases and fee increases are going to cover the balloon payment at the end.
Yep.
That fits a little bit nicer with my wallet.
Yep, I understand.
Okay. So I'm just saying, to, to explain it and get the vote, it might be worth considering the flat. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I think you did a good job of, it's a twenty-year schedule, and year eight, we get to the seventy-five, and then it goes even higher. So that's why I said the average is about seventy-five over the lifespan of the twenty. So I, I thought you articulated that well. There is, I just want to make sure that there is no balloon payment. So a twenty-year flat will actually be the same amount, and I think we're at a higher level throughout that. But then the amount of fee commitment is, stays the same throughout, so there's no, not a declining schedule, it's the same. So I just wanted to make sure that it, in either case, you hit the average after year eight, or you hit the average at the beginning, but you do make the same payment through that whole schedule. But there is no balloon payment at the end. I don't know if that was-
That was a poor term on my, on my part. But it, if you looked at the two curves, declining and a straight, it's the area under the curves that you're comparing. That's the total dollars you're going to spend.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Linda?
I think that it would be wise at town meeting to point out that the first question Mr. Gunderson asked of, what is the impact on the budget? And to make sure that the community understands that the first three items don't impact the budget at all, because they, they don't fund anything in the budget, they're going straight to this refunding, this Receipts Reserve, and that the two increases, we don't have now, so that there is not an impact on the operating budget. And I think we need to make that clear, because I think that was a good question, just to make sure that we're not taking three hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, and we have to scramble to find it somewhere else.
Angelo?
I think it's a good idea that you have, but I also think it's a good idea to decide upfront what kind of debt service we're going to use. And I, and I am obviously for the level debt service, which provides the opportunity for the Waterways, which wants to cover their own costs, to be able actually to do it. Now, yes, it costs a little bit more in total, but if you remember, if you're, win a lottery, and you win twenty, twenty million dollars, and you wait for twenty years, they'll give you the twenty million dollars. And if you want it now, you get about seven to ten. And that's because the money today is more valuable than it is down, down the road. And, and that's why there'll be slight higher interest costs for the flat level. But that's twenty years out. We save money for the, you know, right now. And all the people who are here now and paying those taxes are paying at a lower level, which saves taxpayer money. So I think, I think we, we have, we should be doing it.
Well, my suggestion is, assuming this thing passes and passes the ballot, we get ready, we get ready to actually bond it. Do we have bond counsel come in and tell us, you know, the actual details of, of either way, and let's make a decision?
Well, the only reason I, I was in a total agreement with you, but I think the comment about bringing it up at town meeting and saying, this is what it's going to be, to the voters, so they know exactly what they're paying, will be helpful in guaranteeing the vote. That, that's why I'm, I'm saying, it's a selling point
Yep.
for, for the vote.
I understand.
And taxes will go up this at a lower level. That's-
At the same time, once it's paid off, we can use the money for anything we want. With that reason.
But the money's not the same money.
I understand. I understand. Alright, what's your others? We have a memo that, to Chris from John, the Harbor Master recommending that we use these sources, or these sources be dedicated to funding the project. That's the request in the memo. So, do you have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the funding plan as indicated by Mr. Rendone's memo of April ninth.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to accept the funding plan provided by the Harbor Master regarding the Sacagawea Municipal Marina Reconstruction Project. For a discussion?
One, one, one question. I always have a question.
Okay.
The dock rate increase, the ten percent, which is estimated to be sixty-five thousand, will we be transferring sixty-five thousand over, or will we be transferring the ten percent number? You know, say we don't get all the dock fees in or something? That's a technical, just a curiosity question.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I think we would do, at a minimum, the sixty-five and the, the sixty-five thousand, and you know, we would do the ten percent. And then if it came in higher, I think we would do the, the ten percent.
I think your question may be, what if it comes in lower?
I think the intent is either way.
And what if it comes in lower? I think, I think Chris answered that, it would be the minimum sixty-five.
We'd do the minimum of sixty-five, what we had here.
Well, just to put every, I'm glad the Harbor Master's here, there's a very, very long waiting list for slips. Slips stay empty about an hour and a half, and then they're filled. So, and the price we offer is a reasonable price versus what the private organizations offer. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't worry, as long as the docks are physically there. You know, if the docks disappeared, for whatever reason, you have a different issue. But if the docks are physically there, we should collect the money based on the docks times the fee.
And if I remember right, John, as far as the reconstruction project, assuming this passes the ballot, you know, we're ready to go, and the, the seasonality of this, and whether it's going to impact any fees, dockage fees, slip fees, in the foreseeable future. I think you told us before, it would start, you know, after the voting season and finish before the new voting season, basically.
That's the plan.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big project, and so a lot of things have to go right. But the plan is to cut this upcoming voting season probably two or three weeks short, frankly. I think I've well advertised that to all our slipholders, so I can get the dredge in there and get dredged before the January fifteenth time of year restriction. And then it's my hope to be done with a project certainly by Memorial Day of the following season. So
Yep.
should be no impact.
Alright, so we have a motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Again, the motion is to approve the memo, which is identifying harbor, sources of harbor revenue dedicated to funding the Sacagawea Municipal Marina Project. Hearing them will put it to a vote. All's in fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, sticker sellers. Chris, do you have something on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as we've got into the sticker business here, in, in terms of distributing them, at least in the time I've been here, we've been trying to diversify the way we do it. And one of the things that came out of kind of the process this year, when we were going over the budgets, was the, the town collector, treasurer collector, had come and said that we kind of just grouped the job description for the people that were doing sticker sellers in with a, I can't remember what the old title was. We, we kind of put it in a kind of a catch-all. And she thought that the amount of money that we had in there, which I thought was, yeah, ten dollars and twenty-five cents, that we wanted to have a little bit more flexibility in that. And that as we have the opportunity to bring in a person that has a little bit more skills, a little bit more experience doing this, that we have a greater range to be able to pay. A fair amount of money comes in through there, so it's, it's a little bit more than just a traditional kind of, what's the word I'm looking for, a seasonal person that's collecting. So we wanted to give a little bit more of a position for the person. So we are, we're asking here for a change in title from sticker seller to customer service representative for sticker sales, and also a change in the classification from the seasonal hourly wage schedule to the part-time schedule. The increase would be from ten dollars and twenty-five cents to fourteen sixty-six for FY sixteen. And July first, it would increase by the two percent to fourteen ninety-five. We did also include in the material, the, the new job description that we would like to have in place. I think as we advertise this, it's always best to have the job description try to match up to the duties that we're actually asking people to do. So this is a, a new, a new position title that we think is more, a more accurate reflection of the work that's being done down there.
So let me just ask, is this a single position, or is this every ticket seller that we have, sticker seller we have?
I think this would count for every, every one that we have. And when I say that, I think there's only three. So we're not talking about a, a huge number. What we did last year as one of the cost savings measures is we, not cost savings, more efficiency, is we have the people that are in the collector's office act as the backstop. So anyone wants to get a, a pass, they can go to the collector's office and get it. So we, we wanted to make sure we did some cross-training. But we still have, the, the way it used to be done is that people would go specifically to the community center and pick it up. And there was no, I mean, we basically all sticker sellers, and that was it. We didn't have that cross-training of staff. And now we have that cross-training of staff. So we were able to decrease the amount of people that we needed. We also decreased the season, because I think we were open for like fourteen weeks, and we realized it was only about six weeks of heavy activity where people actually buy the stickers. So this is just kind of a reflection of, I think it's three people that actually do the, the selling down at the community center. And you would see potentially two people, that would be the, the customer service rep, and then one person from the collector's staff down there, depending on how busy we are.
Linda?
And I think we're open seven days a week for that period of time, so that's why we need a few people.
And by the way, we're also, also, excuse me, we're also selling, we're also continuing to sell stickers down at the Chamber of Commerce, right?
Yes, we're going to maintain that. We, actually, Charlene pointed out too, that we have kind of narrowed the hours too. We found that not a lot of people come after two o'clock in the afternoon to, to get beach stickers, which kind of makes sense. So I think we've, we've closed it at two. That doesn't preclude somebody, if they need it, they could still go to the, the Chamber of Commerce and get it down there, or to the window here.
So, so based on reduced hours and, and cutting the season back, do we know what the net impact of this is going to be?
I believe we're revenue neutral, that there's no increased cost related to this proposal. So even though we've increased the hours, because we've been able to streamline the hours themselves, we have an, a increase in total budget.
Linda, you had your hand up first, I think.
Does this have to go through any of the various unions?
Seasonal jobs are personnel bylaw. So there is no collective bargaining obligation on this.
Angelo?
Have you taken into account any impact from links selling, the online stickers for the publisher?
I think what he had said the, the other day when he was here, was it ten thousand? I'm trying to remember the number he used. I think he used like ten thousand people that got beach stickers and two thousand that got transfer station. I don't remember the exact numbers. But I don't think in this circumstance, I think I'd like to see how we go this year. We didn't have a long, any long lines this past year.
I agree.
But we definitely will assess, we'll assess as we go.
I agree with you, but let's see what happens.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move that we approve sticker seller job description and wage as presented.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded to adopt or approve the personnel bylaw changer sticker sellers. That's the salary and job description. Discussion? Hearing them will put it to a vote. All's in fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed to vote? Thank you. Okay, next, the Town Administrator's Performance Review. Just for folks just sitting out there, in the Town Administrator's contract, every April, the Board of Selectmen needs to conduct a performance review. We've used a set of forms and scoring system last year, and again this year, we adopted the same one. We, we tasked Angelo with collecting the information. Thank you, Angelo, for doing that, and assembling it. It is all available to the public, so it's not a, you can see my hand scratching and everybody else's. Some people use, actually fill it out with computers, you can read their stuff easily. Not me, I did the hand- You did it that way?
No, I said just-
No, I said just Linda did that.
Oh, okay. Well, I did, I did the hand scratching, whatever. But Angelo, then I had the job of trying to compile it, I'll always put it that way. So, Angelo, I just refer to you or defer to you at this point in time to tell us the process you followed and what you observed, I guess.
At the end of last week, each of the selectmen gave me their, their form, actually through the secretaries downstairs. And the form looks like this. I know you can't read it, but there's a column for each, each one of the members of the board. And there's the question that is being asked to, for evaluation purpose on this side. So, what I did was fill in the numbers for each of the questions in each person's column. And then through the magic of computers, they averaged the numbers both for an individual question and for an individual person, if you wanted to read it that way. When you get through, when you look at this whole deck, I, I think you'll, you'll see a couple of things. One, you will see that those questions that dealt with workload and working hard and putting in time were all scored as being good, a good level, at a good level. And I think it's clear that last year, it was a diff, another difficult, busy year, and the town administrator put in a lot of time. And we're thankful for that. Unfortunately, I think as you go through the rest of the comments and the lines, you, you'll find that like last year, there were questions about communications, communications with employees, communications with this board, and the transparency of some, some activities. The, the net of that was when you do all the averaging, is that it ends slightly, slightly into the needs improvement area. Just, just a touch below meet expectations. And that, I think, is because of the impact that the communications issue has had on a lot of people. After I put that together, I wrote a, excuse me, a cover letter, which transported this sheet plus each of the individual ones and some comments to both our packet and to the town administrator. One of the things that I, I need to say is that I, I believe personally that a lot of the evaluations were negatively, in fact negatively influenced by the communications issue rather than performance issues. And therefore, I think that there is a very, very strong opportunity for the town administrator to resolve this issue and do it quickly. As a matter of fact, there was even a comment from one of the selectmen on that in the last four weeks or so, he had seen a, a performance improvement. What I'd like to do is to read, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I'd like to read the last two paragraphs, which actually I copied, and they're quote, they have quotation marks around them, from last year's document. Because the, the communication issue and the transparency issue is, is a continuing issue. It's not something that developed now. So, let me just do that, and then I'd like to make a suggestion. While acknowledging the issues stated above, my reading of the individual reports suggests additional attention and improvement is needed in communicating with town employees to ensure their input is taken into account and to help employees to understand reasons for your decisions. I further suggest you reach out to more employees so they are comfortable in bringing problems and issues of concern to you. It is also important that you continue in your efforts to fully communicate with the board of selectmen to allow the board to concentrate its efforts on policy issues with the comfort that the town department objectives are aligned with BOS policy determination, and clear measures are in place to track objectives. That was written by Larry Ballantyne last year, and I think it, it covers the situation very well. You probably know that in our contract, the raise for a town administrator is covered by where they stand in getting their evaluation through. And I would like to make two suggestions. One is this evaluation does not force a raise now. But I think it's the kind of activity which can eas, not easily, but can be taken under control and handled quickly. And I would like to suggest that in six months or so, that we have another evaluation to see how the town administrator is doing, and hopefully to be able to make whatever provisions we deem appropriate in terms of salary and benefits at that time, rather than waiting for a year. And rather than reading two pages of numbers, I think that's my comments.
Okay, so the, let's just, let's do this as motions, I guess. I think the first motion, at least from what you, you said, and by the way, thank you for doing this and consolidating all this. It's not easy, I know that. The first motion would be, I believe, as we, you know, this board voted to extend the town administrator's contract for additional two years, that we would not provide the, any salary increase effective July first would be the first motion. So, why don't we deal with that first, based on the performance review?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know, it's, I don't know how that motion goes because in the contract, contract says it has to be in a certain evaluation. Since it's not a certain evaluation, there's no possibility of, of a raise at this point. So, I don't know.
Someone need for a motion is what you're saying?
I don't know whether we even need a motion for that.
Okay, well, we are, excuse me, we are, town council is preparing a new two-year extension to the contract. Absent a motion, what I would say is that the salary would be the salary as it is today as a starting point. Is that a motion or not? And we could just accept that in the, in the new contract, or contract extension?
I think the motion I'd like to make is that in six months, we, I, I would move that we, in six months, we conduct another evaluation. And hopefully, at that point, it, it meets the proper level, and there is an opportunity for increased salary and benefits.
So, that's a motion?
That'd be a motion.
Okay, so.
Second.
All right, moving to the second, that we do a performance review in six months from now. It's only pick a date, whatever that is. And that we will reconsider any salary adjustment at that point in time. All right, discussion on the motion?
And benefits too, salary and benefits.
Discussion on the motion? Michael?
Yes, can we, can we work on a new evaluation form between now and then as well?
Absolutely.
I think we need to do.
New method.
I, I concur. In, in having to live with this for a week, I, I think we need to try and come up with a better evaluation form. I think we have to have a, on our, in one of our next meetings, we have to go over our objectives for next year and make sure that they are written in a way that they can be objectively dealt with better, I think. If we can, if we're capable of doing it, I mean, if we can do it.
Okay, to now, would you have your hand up?
I was going to say the same thing that we, before we have a, another evaluation, that we actually come up with a new evaluation method.
Anybody else on the motion? Linda?
And if we're going to do that, in all fairness to the town administrator, we need to do that quickly. Because if we're going to change the parameters, change the questions, change et cetera, et cetera, we can't be handing that out in January and say, here you go. Because then he has no idea what he's being evaluated on. So, if this is going to be done, it really needs to be done, say, within the next thirty days.
Okay, but let's focus on.
Right after town, after.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
I'm just making that as a comment because that's the only fair thing to do for an employee.
I'm going to get back to that in a second, but if we just do what the motion, the motion is to do a mid-year, I'll call it, performance evaluation. And if, you know, if it merits it at that point in time, we can reconsider salary and benefits, so. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Alson, fair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, to vote, thank you. What I would say, a couple of things I would say is, number one, Chris, I would, I would suggest, and anybody else can chime in, that, you know, certainly within the next thirty days, you need to digest all this. I think it would be terrific if you came back to us with your action plan, if you will, to make improvements in the areas that, you know, particularly in communication and transparency is, is, we're pointing out. Let's see if we can't come up with a plan that we can all agree to and, you know, work towards that, okay? And in the meantime, if you have specific comments or whatnot, we'd welcome those as well. So, I would, I would highly recommend that to you, and I'm, is that okay with everybody? I'm not going to make that a motion, but I think that should be done. As far as the, the format that's used for evaluating town administrator, it's always been a struggle. I can remember the days when people would just write verbiage, and somebody would try and consolidate it, whatever. Chris, last year, this is the same system he uses with, with department heads, if you will. It isn't perfect. I think we, you know, as we went through it last year, there were, there were some things associated with it. But I would, I would welcome if, you know, if we want to put together a little, a little subgroup to work with Chris maybe and, and come up with some better way to do it. I'm not sure what that is, but some better way to do it. Why don't we all think about that for a week or so, and then we'll put it on the agenda for a discussion? Because I think it should be a cooperative thing where we, we do it in concert with the town administrator so that he understands and we understand how it's all going to work, et cetera, et cetera. And Linda?
I must be the only person. I, I actually don't see, I, I happen to like this review form. It's a, it's a pretty standard way of doing it. It quantifies stuff. It goes through, I actually think it's fairly decent. So, I thought that last year.
I'm not complaining about the form. I think the form's actually easy to work with.
Yes.
In terms of getting averages for both questions and the individuals. I'm concerned with some of the language, because I had a number of people say, I don't know how to deal with question twelve because I'm not sure what, what it, what it means. Or when we're dealing with our objectives, our, our objectives sometimes get very fuzzy. People read them, and they see one objective, and other people see another objective. We have to be very clear with each of our objectives, and the town administrator has to know that he's clear with them, and we're in agreement.
Well, and quite frankly, one of the biggest challenges to any board of selectmen is defining, working with the town administrator to find the goals starting in the new fiscal year or whatever.
Quantifiable goals.
And get to a point where everybody really, you know, agrees and understands what they are, and that becomes a direction or a plan for the year, a focus for the year. We, we all need to put more time and effort into doing that to make it better, let's put it that way.
It's, the evaluation was a little bit of an evaluation on us also. We've got to do it better.
I understand. I understand. Although unfortunately, the only evaluation we get is at the ballot box, so I mean, that's the way that goes. So, Linda?
The motion that we just did is in six months, and we, I think we accepted that, the, in six months, that we would do another evaluation, and there would then be a possible salary increase. Would this board entertain a, to sweeten the pot and see if we can get some movement, would we consider that at that point, if there is a salary increase, retroing it to July first?
That's a discussion to be had at that point in time, I think.
But I think that I'd like you all to be thinking about that.
I would think of that.
I think we would consider that, and it depends on how it all goes between now and then, if everybody's comfortable, happy, whatever. I mean, those things can be considered.
We will have the funds in the budget, though.
Okay, anybody else? Chris?
Just wanted to, I, I just received the information, Mr. Chairman, on Wednesday, and I did take a little bit of time because it was school vacation week to go away with my, my family. Haven't had a chance to, to fully digest it. I do recognize a, a couple of things, though, and I do want to just comment. Number one, I didn't do a self-evaluation. So, I think one of the things I did last year was a self-evaluation to at least give you some measuring stick as to what I thought, how I did during the course of the year. Obviously, I'm, I'm disappointed, and, you know, this is a unusual experience for me to be in the situation that I'm in. But I do intend on meeting with individual members to try to get a better sense, to enhance the communications, and to, to do those enhancements. So, I've met with a couple already, and, and will meet with a couple more to go through that. And I did recognize too, I, I think in some of my conversations, that the need to get the goals much more honed in on. So, I, I think that that is a, a piece that would, I think, would help both, hopefully both sides. Certainly me, I don't want to be accomplishing things that the board doesn't want to have accomplished. That doesn't do me any good, and I don't think it does the board any good. But, you know, just because I haven't had much time to, to really go through, you know, I, I do think it makes some value to having a, the self-evaluation, even though it's retroactive, so at least you guys get a sense for what, at least what I was thinking in terms of it. I tend to grade myself pretty harsh. I don't think I would grade it quite as harsh as, as was. But I appreciate the opportunity and, and obviously want to continue to try to improve my performance with the town and move forward.
Okay, now, it also is a thought that occurs to me is that when we set goals and objectives for the coming year, it might also be interesting, we can have a discussion about whether or not, you know, each goal and objective has a selectman liaison or something, or someone, you know, responsible to, you know, monitor it and maybe work with Chris if we think we're, you know, falling behind or we need to do something. I don't know, depends on how those goals and objectives come out, but just a thought going forward. It, it ties us more into the process than just sitting here waiting for the information to come our way. I don't, just a suggestion. Okay, any else on that topic?
Et cetera.
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate that. Town administrator's report. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to just comment on a, a couple of things. Charlene's done an outstanding job on the town meeting presentations on the motions. So, we'll have for town meeting, the flow of slides. We are working on putting together maps. I thought if people have questions about what the heck is an articulated lift, as an example, we'll have a picture of it. So, if, if people do ask questions, we'll have some of those things. And for us to know, I, I thought the comments that were made by Mr. Gunderson, asking those questions now, that gives us a chance to prepare information in advance, and that is very, very helpful to us to, to try to have some of those materials. But if we don't know what people think is confusing, we don't know what to put in there. So, we will have maps, so anything that's related to a property, like the Marini property, we'll put that map in there so people, that will stand out. But if there are other things that people think make sense to have images of, of what a piece of equipment looks like, I think most people understand what a dump truck looks like, so I don't think we need to, to, you know, have this be too ridiculous. But I think some of those things, we probably should. So, if there's any suggestions the board has, especially on those articles, or if there's something you want that you think that is an article. And, and to the point of, let's have town meeting flow. If no one asks a question and everyone's comfortable with it, we won't show it. But if somebody does ask, what is this, then we'll have the, we'll have the, the material ready to go.
You know, Chris, I have to jump in here and just say that from my experience, this has been one of the most, one of the, the most straightforward and easiest preparations for town meeting I can remember in a long time. You know, the organization, the warrant, dealing with the finance committee, dealing with the folks that had articles, et cetera, et cetera. I, I personally think it slowed very well. I mean, we've oftentimes had articles that we were still kicking around at this late hour and making decisions, you know, the night of town meeting, that type of thing. I think, you know, the way it's been organized and, and the good work of, you know, and your staff and whatnot, and the finance committee and everybody else involved, it's been a relatively, I shouldn't use the word easy, but straightforward process this year.
But that's scary. That's scary that it's not so well.
I'll also say this, when you have four million dollars in free cash, it's a lot different than.
A lot different than.
It makes life easier.
It makes, it makes it a lot different.
Just a, a couple of other things. So, if, if board members have anything, please feel free to pass those along. I did, we, on one of the articles, we had in there for the storage tank at the, for the water department on Lothrup. And we did get the bids in today, and it came in early this morning. And I just, as much advance notice as I possibly can do, they came in higher than anticipated. One of the things that I think we were, that they were looking at in a quick, in a quick discussion, the, the tank manufacturer that gave us the original estimate went up by a hundred thousand. So, when we get these estimates in the beginning of the, the year, when we're doing the capital budget, which is really done at the end of last calendar year, we're relying upon information until we get the bids. The other thing, as I was talking to them today, the, the size of the pump had to be upsized because there was some issues about how much water was going through it. So, what was anticipated in the initial draft, once they did the final analysis, came in higher. So, I guess the, the good news is that the. So I guess the, the good news is that the retained earnings for the water department came in at 1.7 million dollars. So I know the water commission, I, I see a commissioner is here, they're going to decide what they want to do on Wednesday morning. So they could either, you know, well, they, they could go through the material and see. One option that they would have is, do they want to use a little bit more than anticipated of their retained earnings to go ahead and do this project? Or is there any value engineering that can be done to, to drop it? My, my instinct would be, you know, the original estimate was about 1.8, and to have it come in at 2.2, generally, when you value engineer, you can maybe take a hundred thousand, that, that's an awful steep number to, to try to take out. So they're going to decide that, so the motion will be adjusted. And certainly at the motions meeting on Wednesday morning, I'll, I'll bring that up to the, to the moderator, that that is something. But it was, and it's in the book, obviously, as a estimated amount. So we do, and, and certainly the way the, the charter is constructed here, is it encourages the different town departments to get actual bids in hand, so when you go to town meeting, we don't run into issues. Because what sent this as an initial issue was to do the painting of the original tank, was I think 2.6 million? So, you know, we were trying to find, so we have come up with a, a cost savings by doing this, but we're off a, a little bit than what we had anticipated. So I just wanted to get that out as soon as possible, so that came in today, the bids came in today, and they're fully evaluating them. So just to, to have that as a, as an.
Chris, you know, you, you mentioned the pump got larger, that's when, that means a higher horsepower for the pump.
A higher horsepower.
So does that mean their energy consumption number's going to be going up?
I would guess that.
So, I know before they said it was sort of a washover, the lifetime, if they're going up. Maybe somebody needs to revisit what those numbers actually are, so.
Well, he heard the question, he could, he could bring it up at the water commission meeting, if that's.
Oh, the question is, you know, I, I think when, when Dan was here before, and we talked about the tank, one of the questions is, is basically a ground-based tank that is pumped, it pumps or pump, a pump at least, involved? Because, you know, you don't have the, you know, up the tower anymore. So the question became, all right, so if the tank is less expensive, are you spending more in energy costs, which could offset the savings from the tank on the ground? I don't know, you know, at, at that time, he said his evaluation was, it would be, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, it'd be better to go with a ground-based tank, even though you were using energy for the pumps. I don't know what size the pumps are, now they've gotten bigger, the question is, does that change anything? I have no idea. I'm just asking the question.
Good evening, Gary Crowell, water commissioner, I think it'd be better if I came up here instead of answering from the back. I don't have an answer to that question. It definitely would be something that we look into, this is the first time I'm hearing about the numbers, and obviously not too pleased about it myself, so. But it'll be something that we discuss Wednesday morning.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Because someone will ask it on town meeting floor, I'm sure, you know. Okay.
And then the, the last item that I have is just on the plastic bag ban. We sent out the materials, obviously, we've done some public outreach. And I know a couple of the stores, I've gotten a little bit of feedback, they've signed, put postings up, or, or let people know that the change is coming. So I did dedicate my, I don't know, I guess it was eight, eight or nine minutes long of my administrators' monthly on the differences in the plastic bags, and trying to continue the education process, as well as I know folks in the health department have done that. But, so just, I appreciate those stores that are stepping up to, to come into compliance, because obviously, we don't want to do enforcement if we can get voluntary compliance.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question about that, Mike. What did we decide was, was the enforcement, the, or the who was policing this?
The, the bylaw specifically calls for the enforcement agent would be the police department or the.
Board of Health.
The Board of Health. Health Department.
And the date was June 15th?
June 15th.
Right, yeah. Okay, any else?
Nope, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, selectmen's reports, Angela will start down there. Lynda?
Nope.
Janelle?
Nothing.
Okay, I'll just remind everybody that town meeting is next?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah, I'll give you a second, don't worry. Next Monday, it starts at seven o'clock, get there ahead of time, because hopefully get a big crowd, so get there six-thirties, and get a good seat, and check in and get your ticket, and, and you'd spend some time, review and the warrant, and, you know, studying the issues and whatnot. It is your money. It's not our money, it's your money.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, the council on aging has, and I think she was in the other day, about, she has the van available, so if somebody does need a ride to town meeting, I think if you call the council on aging number, you can make arrangements, so you can get door-to-door service, if you would, for folks that want to participate and may not have the ability to drive.
Okay, and did I hear there's some babysitting, I shouldn't call it babysitting, but childcare available?
Yes. Do you want to get up and say something, or?
Yes, the recreation department offers that, free childcare service, and if you just preregister by calling the recreation department, they'd be very happy.
And the children stay at the community center?
Yes, yes, so you can check on them, and they do fun games and activity, and they are well taken care of. And we encourage people to use it, the recreation department does a great job.
Great, thank you.
Quickly, Carolyn, is there a time that it ends, or does it go to the end of town meeting?
To the end of town meeting. Long as you're at town meeting.
Did you have a comment?
For your sleeping bag.
Please, stand at the mic, stand at the mic.
She's going to probably fall asleep.
Shh. Hey, hey.
Sharon Fleecker, I was just wondering if somebody on the board would like to comment about the meeting Thursday, the 28th? I believe it's considered a public hearing for the wastewater. I don't know enough about it, so I can't comment about it, but I, I didn't see a lot of information out about it.
Can we just appoint you to the wastewater group? I'm teasing, I'm teasing it. Please, stand there for a second, in case need, Clarice.
Yes, this Thursday, April 28th, at 5:00 PM, in this very room, the Cape Cod Commission will be holding the DRI, which is Development of Regional Impact Public Hearing on the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. So if you're interested in that, be here at 5:00, I'll be here.
And.
And the Cape Cod Commission Subcommittee will be here.
Do, do they make a presentation at that point, or do they just?
Dave Young will be making a presentation. It's, it's pretty much like any other public hearing you would be going to at a regulatory board, you know, whether planning board, zoning board, CONCOM. The, the applicant will have the opportunity to make a presentation. If there are any public officials there who would like to speak, whether for or against it, they'll have the opportunity. The Cape Cod Commission staff will have prepared a staff report for it, which I have not seen yet. Usually, they distribute that early, I've not seen a copy of it yet. Then the, the subcommittee, members of the subcommittee who make up the, the folks who'll be doing the actual review, and then making a recommendation to the full Cape Cod Commission, they will ask questions. They will decide whether or not the, the hearing needs to be continued, or, or what have you. My guess is there will be a continuation for additional information, that's typically what happens at a Cape Cod Commission hearing.
Okay, and if you get information early.
If I do get a, a packet, I'm not sure who the staff representative is for this. In previous towns and hats, I was always the DRI representative, I'm not here, so I'm.
I understand.
I'm not sure who is, and where we are in that. But if I do get anything, I will share that.
Will it be televised? Or recorded?
Will it be televised? That's a good question, Jamie? No, she will not be here.
Okay.
Can we do it?
I don't know.
Is Caleb available? Okay, we'll talk about that.
But I just, just survey the board for a second, on who can be here, or who will be here that night?
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, I'm expecting to be here, but, okay, so we can, we'll be represented.
That's fine.
You good? So five o'clock, you'll be here?
Five o'clock.
On Thursday, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
Can we get this put up on our website?
Jamie's going to take care of it.
Is Jamie going to, she's going to? Great, thank you. Because this really should have been on our website a while ago.
There was a little tiny block in the newspaper.
Yes.
The big newspaper, or the bigger newspaper? The best newspaper?
There it is, newspaper.
And maybe, and maybe Bill, it will be in this week's edition, as well?
The only reason that I knew about it was David Young sent an email out, and if it wasn't.
No one can hear you, Sharon.
All right, thank you, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Okay, any else? We're adjourned, thank you.